...introduction that I'll let the gentleman give you the nuts and bolts. But today, the healthcare presentation is going to be bringing you up to speed on the changes in the healthcare law and potentially how it may impact the school district and our health insurance. So today, we have Brian Brannan from Crown, who is our health insurance broker, and also Jay Minioti, who will be walking in shortly. Jay Minioti, Actuarial Services, who actually did some soundness tests and actuarial studies on our plan to give you some updates on that, too. So without further ado, Brian.
What's your last name again, Brian?
Brannan.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Thank you, Mr. Barker. Now we get to talk about healthcare reform. Some exciting stuff. So the purpose of this presentation is really to give you an overview of the law, what is going to be required by the school district, what we need to do in order to be in compliance. Now, the law was signed in March 23rd of 2010, as most of you know. And a lot of what, you know, you keep hearing, "Oh, we're going to repeal the act." And a lot of folks, and a lot of folks that I talked to have, really, they did a wait-and-see with the past election. Obviously, President Obama got re-elected, and the law is not going to change. So now, everybody is kicking into gear and getting ready for 2014. And really, every month, if not every two weeks, you see some sort of update with, as it pertains to the law, they're changing. They've already backed off. In terms of the 2014, January 1, 2014, those plans that do not have an anniversary date of January 1, 2014, they backed off to let those plans out. If they have a 7-1, they'll have to comply. So there's changes that are continuing to come, and I would bet my lunch money, we're going to see a bunch more by January 1, 2014. So just a couple of pictures, this shows you what the law, how big it is. It's 2,500 pages, and it's a lot. So this is a timeline. I don't want to go through every single thing, but you can see that in terms of Audrey and I'm sure he said Kenny, their staff, we really have to, there's a lot of things that we have to make sure the plan is providing and have, make sure that we're meeting these timelines. The plan, which we'll get into further, as Mr. Barker stated, we brought in an outside actuary to test the soundness of our plan to make sure that we're meeting the needs, because we have to make sure our plan meets certain tests that I'm going to go over here in just a minute.
I think the last question you said, changes that are coming about, changes in the way it's applied, still the same law, or changes in the law?
Well, there's certain measures in terms of the plan design that we have to meet.
But when things are changed, are they changed, are you saying, in the law, or just changes?
Well, the law requires us to make certain changes in the plan that we have to comply with.
Okay, but would they want to change something in Obamacare?
Right, it could, if something, I wouldn't say that they're going to do away with, it would probably be relaxing off of a timeframe or something like that in terms of compliance. That's kind of been what's happening, is you have a handful of states, actually, a bunch of states, that have basically punted the create-your-exchange, state exchange, back to the federal government, which is, this is operated by HHS. They're all, I think the reaction, they were surprised, and now it's, everybody's scrambling, trying to put in the certain measures to handle all this. Florida is one of those states that said, "Federal government, you'll create the exchange for us." So now, you've got this fight with, and Jay can probably elaborate better than I can in terms of the Medicaid dollars and stuff that's at risk for the state. And we're getting into, I could talk, we could talk for hours on this, but let me go through, and then we'll field some questions at the end. Healthcare reform. Again, I'm not going to read it verbatim. It requires everyone to have health insurance. There's an individual mandate. And if the employer doesn't provide the healthcare for you, or does away with health insurance, there's a mandate that requires the individual to have, and there's a tax. Everybody knows it was upheld as a tax. So these are the ways, these are significant features of healthcare reform. There's a mandate, employers are required to provide or pay a penalty. Those are employers that will pay a penalty if they employ more than 50 employees. There's a requirement, there's, insurance companies have to cover all the risks. There's no pre-existing conditions. And there's a minimum coverage for first dollar preventative care, because those are things that we're already doing in terms of the plan. That's what I mean, but when I say making changes, we've already made moves in the plan to conform. How or where will people get their health coverage? Through the employer, through Medicare, if you're over 65, Medicaid, for those that are, meet certain poverty levels, they can get Medicaid dollars. Do the insurance exchanges. You can get it through armed forces, childcare, competitive administration, so forth. For the individual, what does it mean? If the individual doesn't have health insurance, these are the penalties or taxes that would be applied, and it shows you that it's on a sliding scale for the next three years of what the impact would be on the individual if they don't have insurance through their employer or don't have some sort of coverage. This is the, these are the penalties.
So where do they pay the penalty, too? How is the penalty paid?
It's when you fill out your...
EpiPen?
Yep.
What happens if you have no taxable income, or you have like credit, earned income credit?
Good question. I would assume that it would be, if you're credit owed, it would be taken off of that. Jay, you got any thoughts on that?
The mandate is going to be processed through filing a tax return. If you don't file a tax return, you don't have to pay that penalty.
That's interesting. If you don't pay taxes, then it'd be a free, Brian, to your excuse.
Well, it's also the case that in order to qualify for any of the subsidies that are going to be in the exchange, you have to file a tax return as well. And that existing form is going to be used for this purpose.
When you say subsidies, like a Medicaid or free healthcare or something?
No, I mean that when the healthcare exchanges go into existence, if you meet certain income requirements, then you can qualify for subsidies that would lower the premium you would otherwise pay in the exchange. But in order to qualify for those subsidies, the employer's plan, your plan, would have to meet certain requirements or deficiencies. Your plan currently does not, so any of your employees who did decide to opt out of your plan and go to the exchange and shop it, they would have to pay the full fare, whatever that might be, in the exchange. And then, people who are lower income are going to qualify for an expanded Medicaid program that's going to cover people up to 138% of the federal poverty limit, which is about 16, well, it's 100%. It's going to be about $18,000 or so a year to an individual.
And those people who don't pay taxes and aren't in a program, then what happens to them? What millions do don't pay taxes on this level? They get help here, but what happens to them? And how is that tracked? Do they go into like an emergency room, like an event?
That's the thought, is you're going to have a lot of employers, and we could debate what's going to happen, but you know, if you're a small employer, less than 50 lives, that employer has currently provided health insurance, maybe they're a plumbing contractor, and it's, they have to build in the cost of the health insurance that they're providing now, and it's costing them dollars, so they may weigh it and say, "You know what? If you're into the exchange, I'm going to give you $200 a month and have at it." And whether the employee gets, goes to the exchange and gets the health insurance would be up to that individual. And they, our fault is the penalty, even if they pay taxes, is not high enough, they'll just not take it. And then, when there is a need, they will just go to the emergency room or go, you know, self-pay.
Might employers choose just to pay the penalty?
I'm sorry?
Would it be cheaper just to pay the penalty?
Jay can weigh in on that, and that's part of the study that we did, what, and we're kind of going a little farther ahead, so we can get into the financial side of it.
All right.
If you don't mind, I'll just go through this real quick, and then we can talk about that. As Jay said, individuals that meet certain requirements will, if they left the plan and they meet a certain level, a poverty level, in the exchange, they can get, they can get dollars if they meet these certain levels. They'll get a subsidy in order to offset those costs. This is just, this shows you what happens to a small employer, large employer. If you look at this chart, we're following in side C and D. So right now, with the testing that was done, our plans meet the affordability and meet the essential benefits needs, so that 90%, 89%?
The law stipulates that in plan, in order to be viable or compliant, it has to satisfy two things. It has to have what they call minimum actuarial value, and it has to be deemed affordable to the employees. Now, the minimum value is 0.6. What is that 0.6 of? Well, all of the plans out there, there's a tool that can measure the value of your plan, and it's a determination of the richness of the benefits. So if some, if a benefit plan covered everything, there's no cost at all to the employees, no cost sharing, no co-insurance, no copays, no deductibles, that would be assigned an actuarial value of 1.0. The minimum, or the bronze level, they have a metals terminology they're using in the whole deal, bronze, silver, gold, platinum. A platinum plan covers 90%, and on the other end, a bronze plan covers 60%. Your plan is measured out to be a 0.83, which is a little bit richer than a gold plan. So the district has no concern about whether they offer a plan that satisfies that minimum value requirement, that most certainly does. The second piece of it is affordability. The single premium to an employee can cost no more than 9.5% of their income for the lowest level plan that is offered to them. So you offer two benefit plans, they both coincidentally have an actuarial value of 0.83 despite the fact that they appear different and have slightly different cost-sharing features. From an actuarial perspective, they are equivalent to each other. But there isn't anybody in the plan, employees, whether they're enrolled or not enrolled, they're employees of the district, there isn't anybody in the plan for whom the cost of that low plan would cost more than 9.5% of their income. So what I'm sure of it is that your plan is considered affordable in the eyes of the law, your plan is considered to provide minimum value in the eyes of the county.
And is the 9.5% of the employee cost or the total cost?
It's 9.5% of the employee's income.
Cannot exceed, that's what I'm saying, is that the employee's portion of the plan or the plan?
Yes. The employee's portion. Their payroll deductions aggregated on an annual basis can not exceed 9.5% of their income.
So there's a positive difference to one employee or another? Like, do schools base one amount, say, per student, just again, and then it's supposed to another amount, etc.?
No, you're paying, each employee, the district pays a fixed amount per month.
So there's no change in that?
Right, that's exactly. So for the person who makes less money, it might be 8% of their income, and for the superintendent, it might be 2% of his income, but it's the same flat dollar amount, just measured against whoever incomes.
And that's based on our lowest-paid 40-hour-a-week FTE, for employee FTE?
It's based on the people who are not otherwise eligible or would be eligible for Medicaid in its expanded form.
But part-time employees, you know, if there were a part-time employee, does that, that doesn't involve, that doesn't need to qualify for their 90%?
We do have 20 employees, and that does meet the mandate, correct?
That was what I was saying.
Yeah, I thought that was...
Thank you for... Right. So it still evidently meets the threshold for our 20-hour, I mean, our 20-hour-a-week?
Your, your...
Right.
The case point.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Affordability and the benefit side of it, the plan is meeting the needs in the eyes of the law.
If the plan did not meet one of those two tests, then if an employee went to the exchange, it would open the district up to the penalties that are either $2,000 or $3,000. In your case, you're continuing to offer a plan. If any of your employees did go out to the exchange, then they could potentially expose the district to a penalty of $3,000.
And that's one employee. If just one employee were able to go out and get the subsidy, it would trigger for that penalty. So by the definition of what Jay said, the plan meets supportability and the benefits, that the penalty, if an employee left the plan and went to an exchange, then there would be, there's no penalty, because our plan meets those needs. That's the point of this chart. Basically says, if the employee receives a credit, then there, and we do not meet those needs, which our plan does, this is what would happen. Okay, just a couple of rules. Pre-existing conditions are eliminated. The group policy, obviously, I don't want to read all this, but the health status, medical condition, and so forth, those types of things, we cannot base our policy on those, which we don't. Exchanges, this is what I talked about earlier. If the states fail to create the exchanges, HHS will create the state exchange. And as of, towards the end of February, there were only 24 states and the District of Columbia that had opted to run their own state exchange. Florida is not currently one of those.
I'm sorry, what does HHS stand for again?
Health and Human Services. And they've been charged with the task of handling all of this. I've got a great chart at the end, that shows you kind of the flow. The purpose of it, again, is to make plans available for members or employees or anyone to get health insurance. Carriers will participate. You even have other folks that are actually creating private exchanges that will be a part of the buying system, if you will, for folks to get health insurance. Just a few rules, I had to maintain websites where the employees or folks that are shopping for health insurance, you know, where they can get information about the health plans. Kind of like if you've looked at the Medicare supplement contracts, how you can go on and shop the different plans and look at the pricing. This is kind of like, this is kind of the same idea. Okay. What type of coverage must a district offer? Again, as Jay touched, we have done this test, and when you said that it's based on different levels, 60% is the minimum, our plans fall in the 83% category, so we are meeting that need. Affordable. We are also meeting that need, and Jay, that number was?
Eight. One percent?
Yeah.
There's one employee for whom the cost of that low plan costs 8.8% of their salary. So there's a little bit of wiggle, and obviously, if you choose to lower your contributions, it would make them more affordable for people. Most people don't have plans to lower their contributions.
Minimum essential benefits, these are requirements that we are providing in the plan. These are the ten defined benefits. I think the big question I would talk about is substitutes and how that gets measured. We've heard where, you know, how do you, because you have to do a measurement period of how you meet the definition of a employee. And there is a look-back provision that you have to use to find, study to find out how many employees are going to be, are going to have to be affordable or be available to have health insurance. So three months is the minimum, up to 12 months. And some districts have talked about, "Well, let's do a measurement period that would be in the summer month, so that it would cancel out those folks." We felt that that's probably not the direction to look at it. We looked at it on a 12-month, looked at it on a 12-month period. And looking at that, the preliminary test suggests that there's 35 substitutes that would then be eligible to be on the plan as a full-time. Seasonal employees, it's, you know, there's a lot of other companies that have seasonal employees, and this is kind of a definition that was cleared up. Could you treat them as seasonal? The answer was no.
What defines, and I apologize, what defines the 35 current substitutes? It's not evidently all of our substitutes.
No, it was amount of hours worked in that period.
Is there, do you know what that roughly is?
We looked at the amount of hours, it was who worked less than, I believe Audrey looked at 120 hours, and we had roughly 35 that we had. We thought we would have a lot more, but we had 35 that were in a long-term sub or sub for a school or schools on a regular basis.
And at what point do they have to, does it fall into that they have to be provided the plan? So at what point does that happen, you know, does that average start to take place?
Yeah, how many weeks?
How many weeks does that establish that? You know, I mean, we get, because we have somebody that, you know, for the next two weeks, they're going to be, you know, or they've got a 30, you know, the next month, somebody's out.
This look-back period that they're referring to is the amount of time over which you have to get this idea of qualification. It has to be at least 90 days or three months, and no more than 12 months. So you want to look over a sufficient number of times, so that people coming and going, working variable hours and that sort of thing, are given a fair measurement of the amount of time that they are working that average. And if it comes out to be at least 30 hours per week over that timeframe, then they have to be offered coverage.
And if we offer them coverage and they choose not to take it?
That's, it's an okay situation for the district. That's okay. Your obligation is to offer it.
Right. Now they, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Now they do take it, though. And now, at the end of the school year, let's say they are done, are we not required to keep them?
Over the summer?
Over the, you know, for how long a period do they continue that coverage?
They continue the coverage for the duration of your coverage period, which is only one year at a time.
So I'm hired as a permanent sub for three months, and then I don't come back to work for the school system, I can maintain that, I can keep health insurance for an entire year?
If you, not, if you meet the definition of 30 hours, not, because the measurement period is not substantial enough.
You would have to have 90 days.
Let's put it this way, if they satisfied the condition to be offered coverage, and were offered it at the beginning of the anniversary, and they started to pay the premium, and then they were no longer with you, then if they continue to pay the premium, I just wonder if they would continue to be allowed coverage?
Because we would still have to pay their percentage amount? But what about our portion of the premium? We pay that when they're not on our payroll?
That's a stupid law.
Is it, is it necessarily a COBRAD act?
No.
It wouldn't be a COBRAD act either.
We have to, we have to offer coverage for six months, or the extent that includes the same amount period as the look-back.
Right.
So if we do a 12-month look-back period, we are committed to 12 months worth of coverage.
And then that whole time, they may work this year and meet the criteria, and then start to offer health insurance for that year. They may have the workforce during that whole year, but we have to provide them.
We don't have to do that now?
No.
Even with full-time employees? If a full-time employee leaves in March, then that's going to get covered?
That's a COBRAD.
COBRAD is going to, so...
COBR regulations have yet to be defined.
So it's kind of going backwards, actually. I mean, the person may not have workforce, but we have to go to the look-back period and meet the criteria, and we have to offer them the insurance for the following year.
So this may really, and I've heard this before, and I didn't really believe it, because it was all political rhetoric, this might really influence who we hire and for how long, and for what positions. We may end up having to hire full-time substitutes on our staff and not have people work for us temporarily.
And I think we may hire teachers to cover in a substitute capacity that we normally wouldn't, but we'll offer it to teachers who already have our insurance.
You mean retired teachers?
No, no, no. On their planning period?
Oh, we can do that in third grade, but maybe, right.
I'm thinking high school.
Right, six teachers a day.
The offering period, the look-back period, the offering period. Do you create the offering period? Does that, does that trigger, start when they, at what point, I mean?
For this first, sorry, Jay, sorry, Jay, sorry. For the first year, we have the opportunity to select a look-back period.
Okay.
Anytime between three months and 12. After January 1, each person hired will have an individual look-back period. Now, if we hire somebody on February 1, their look-back period begins on February 1. And we hire somebody on February 2, their look-back period begins on February 2. So we'll have to look at each individual employee as they're hired, as to the look-back period and eligibility.
We've got to have four.
For 12 months. And this now has created a tracking issue, and now we have to track these individuals, these individuals individually, to be able to make sure that we meet the minimum.
Is there an answer?
It doesn't change when your regular open enrollment period would be.
No, but it creates a new enrollment for that situation.
It creates an eligibility...
That's, thank you, that's good.
Whether, you know, so from the normal timeframe of things, whenever your open enrollment period would begin, it begins for all of your standard, normal, full-time employees, plus these others that are deemed to be newly eligible based on... these others that are deemed to be newly eligible based on their look back calculation. And then open enrollment goes through, they, like everybody else, have the option to accept or not accept the coverage, and then everybody's effective at your regular effective date.
Yeah, so to Kenny's point, or when Audrey's, you get hired on different dates, it's different tracking for different, every individual. It's a nice spreadsheet opportunity. Again, this is how the coverage is obtained, and it's kinda blurry. Hopefully, the printout is a little better. It just walks you through how, how, how you're gonna get coverage, kind of what we've all been talking about for the last thirty minutes. Just, this kinda puts it into a nice diagram of how, how the flow would work. Are there any additional fees or penalties that, under the new law, that we have to be geared up for? And the answer is yes. Most recently, or starting in, in July of this year, there is what's known as, called a PECORE fee. That's the Patient Centered Outcome Research Institute fee. This evaluates and will compare outcomes of clinical effectiveness when two or more treatments or services are, are put together. This fee is, is a dollar per covered life for 2013. 2014 goes to two dollars. And then it's indexed to a national expenditure which is yet to be determined. The district will. And that is filed and paid directly to the IRS through Form 720. Seven twenty, right? Yes, seven twenty. So that one is not too bad. The, the federal reinsurance tax, however, is a substantial number. This is designed to help stabilize the exchanges for catastrophic, for catastrophic claims that would hit through into the exchanges. Again, this is a three-year commitment of what is now, I would say it's pretty firm, the number, which is evaluated now at sixty-three dollars per covered life. And that is also, like I said, a three-year. I've read reports that by 2016, the number could be as high as a hundred. But again, that's yet to be determined. And all we know is that in 2014, we need to adjust our, when we go to budget for what we're gonna pay for claims in 2014, we need to now budget an additional twenty-seven-hundred lives, a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars we have to now account for in, in our projections for 2014. That's, sounds like funny.
How do you get that information about, those are pre-existing, or just to use a number, you can say a number, you know, individually survey, did you find out?
No, again, this was a rule, this is part of the law that was put out. The federal reinsurance tax is, is, we can't escape that one. Okay, there's my nice little diagram. So I'm, I'm sure you've seen it before.
No, we haven't.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Yeah, there, there, there's a couple out there, but this, this one's kinda, kinda funny about how, how the, how this all, how this all came about.
And is it sadly real?
I, I, what I've tried to look at this and try to go through it, yeah, you know, a lot, it makes a lot, it does.
Please don't say sense.
It does. It does, based on what we're having to do.
It reflects reality.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blocker.
Thank you.
So that's all that I have. I, I would suggest that maybe every two months or so, we can, I'm talking with Audrey pretty much weekly about all this stuff, and maybe we can just do another update in the summer if there's anything that changes to give you guys an idea of what, what we're having to, what we're faced with.
Thank you, sir.
So wait, just, I just want to make this clear. So what are your projections can be increased to our health insurance premium, or our health insurance?
Well, it's early. We're only three months in. We're running it right now. The first couple of months were, actually, January was not a good month. Just with the, just with the research fee, we got roughly two hundred thousand dollars, that's, that's, that's one and a half percent already, just in those two fees that we have to pay for. I would, again, how the claims are gonna run?
We've, we've done some early estimates on looking at this, and we're estimating about eight hundred thousand dollar increase based on the reinsurance tax, the research fee, now covering pre-existing conditions and covering substitutes, just aggregating it out to about.
And what about employees that aren't covered right now, that have opted out of the plan?
I think we've got to, we do.
How many, how many, what's percentage?
Five hundred?
Yeah, there are probably a lot of more part-time employees or?
That are eligible?
Yes.
That are eligible? Okay, not, okay.
So, I mean, when we were looking at like last year, two or three percent, we will, we would probably be down that same bracket again for next year, or something that was seven, eight percent back then.
But our premiums for our employees are not gonna change. They might go up, but they're not gonna go down.
Well, they're not gonna go down.
Okay. So the, the, I think the thing that I hear from employees why they don't have the insurance is that their insurance pretty much, well, it would probably be over the nine and a half percent, like we talked about that, the part-time employees are, are employees at the bottom of the pay scale. What do we do about that?
Well, that's when we have to make adjustments, when we call Jay, and Jay, the analysis from the study is, oh, if you beat that margin, that nine and a half percent will be employees' gross salary.
And what happens if it doesn't? We have to subsidize it?
That's correct.
Just those employees?
I think we decided that you can, you have discriminatory, you have to be consistent across the board, that you have to work pre-union the same.
So if we say that the employee payroll deduction has to be reduced by thirty dollars a month, then we have to reduce, why would we care? Honestly, why would we say then that we would do it to everybody? It's non-discriminatory. You're saying this discriminates employees that make more money?
Potentially, when we look at it, Jay.
Like reverse discrimination, I guess.
No, I, I think what they're referring to is the district's contribution to the premium.
Right.
And if that were at different scales for different employees, that it could potentially open the board up to challenge.
And that's what I asked a long time ago, is about cultural difference in the pay. And are you saying now, it shouldn't be because that would open up the board?
The, yeah, the district's contribution, if it were to bear, that, that could potentially open up the challenge.
Okay, so I just, I'm, so there's a lot of information here. Just tell me again, if an employee is eligible for health insurance and chooses not to partake in our plan, what is our financial obligation to that employee? Nothing?
Right now, nothing.
They don't have to provide it?
We have to offer.
Have to offer.
We have to offer it.
And if they, if they choose to waive it, which five hundred people currently do?
Okay.
The district has no obligation because it has proven the plan to be affordable and has proven that to be providing at least a minimum value.
So why are people saying, and again, more political rhetoric, but, you know, the belief was that you had to cover a hundred percent of your eligible employees and that employers then were, you know, but if the cost was gonna be prohibitive and they were gonna fire people and all this baloney, so that's not true.
What's true is that you have to offer it to at least ninety-five percent.
We offer it to anybody anyway. Nobody doesn't get offered health insurance. Well, our, our part-time employees don't.
That's true.
Except for the thirty-five, that's about the only difference.
In this particular organization, but most organizations have full-time permanent employees and they offer the insurance and you have to have seventy-five percent enrolled or you don't have it or whatever.
Right, they're, the, the ones that make the newspapers are the ones who have large part-time populations, the restaurant industry, and they don't particularly offer health insurance to all those people. The management of restaurants might have a program that's a carve-out of some kind, but a lot of the staff isn't because while they're working a lot of hours, they might not make forty hours a week, and right now, the requirement is that they don't have to, but if the law is making that thirty hours, it's opening up eligibility to a lot more people.
Okay, but, but for, for employers like us that have made, and we've been offering insurance to everyone, and what's our wait, what's a wait period for health insurance? Is it starting from the day you start your employment?
Which is the month after thirty, yes. So your, your hire date plus thirty days in the first.
Is it more offer or does it offer affordable, because everyone could offer and say ten thousand dollars a month, doesn't mean?
You have to offer a plan that meets these requirements for affordability, not exceeding nine and a half percent, and offers a minimum value of at least a point six. So you're offering compliance coverage.
So what did you think, the health insurance companies would be all happy because now they have to sell you, as you call it, richer, richer benefits?
No.
Can't have a streamlined, really, that plan, right?
The, the insurance companies, what their concern is that the pre-existing conditions that were not typically otherwise previously covered now must be. Their, their, their greater concern is on the underwriting that they're not allowed to do anymore. They're not allowed to use age and gender, whereas they were able to price people according to that. Now they can't do that. Plus, you can't offer your oldest membership a price that's more than three times your youngest membership, but actuarially, the cost of our older folks is close to five or six times. So they've compressed and made it a lot harder for the insurance companies to be profitable, which is why this reinsurance fee of sixty-three dollars exists even, because they know that with mandated coverage, there's gonna be a lot of demand put on the system, and a lot of people who wouldn't otherwise have been covered are gonna get covered, get treatment, and that's gonna drive costs up.
But that was individual policy holders, because in good health, you can't have any, there's no pre-existing conditions in Florida.
There hasn't been with HIPAA.
Right.
But small business has been the individual policy holders who are now gonna have to offer these plans.
So small businesses under how many, twelve, fifty employees that don't, that aren't under this?
They're not subject to this, right, right. It's, it's really fifty full-time employees.
Fifty employees, that's the same.
But I think that, yeah, so some of the things, you know, impact, but what does impact is the financial, the tax, the?
I, I think, yeah, those, those two fees, obviously, but HIPAA mandated people cover pre-existing conditions already, that shouldn't have much more of an incremental impact on you. I think the biggest risk to the district is those folks who are currently not on the plan, when it comes time for open enrollment, if they are to be offered coverage, and they have an option of your plan, potentially their spouse's plan if elsewhere, the exchange and/or Medicaid. All of a sudden, there's a lot more options that people have to consider. There are five hundred fifty-nine full-time employees that work at least forty hours that currently waive your plan. Those folks, a good number of them could decide to opt in because it represents the best, most affordable, richest offering that they can get.
Does this require us to have an open enrollment period?
You already have an open enrollment period here.
Well, we didn't always. We went many years without an open enrollment. Many years.
Closeable.
Yeah, so is there a requirement that we have to have at least one time a year open enrollment?
Yes, there is.
Is it required to have an open enrollment?
The, the closing moment is not.
Okay. Well, that was our own policy, but I'm not asking about whether this law requires us to have an open enrollment. Since we've had that battle for you before your time.
Yeah, so as testing now, there's, there's thirty-five that meet the, meet the definition of full-time, that would have to be offered coverage, except for substitutes.
And they don't have to wait for an open enrollment period because they already qualify? Would students have offered to them before?
Yeah, they're each, they're each. Look back periods, and when they start in February, they will be here, and we look back, expect there to be something that criteria of thirty hours per week to handle the health insurance.
So what is our look back period gonna be, when we?
Four months.
So, but, and then that ties us to have it for twelve months. Is that too much of a risk?
It's not really known right now. I mean, we look at.
We know where our employees' past employment has been, right?
Right, but, you know, some, we have many, we have part-six, eight or so, and right now, we're seeing an impact of thirty-five. So we're gonna have to manage, maybe help some different criteria on how we use us
Have you, we ran numbers on a six-month look back period and then the anticipated risk for having to cover them six months versus thirty-five for one year? How many for six months and what would that cost be for six months, given the fact that maybe we just assume that none of them come back to work?
We, we've looked at the period from July first to February first, that's the seventh period. We haven't done another calculation as well. We're all just trying to get around, we, we did the actuarial work.
Because the look back period can vary from three to six to nine, up to twelve months, it's a very valid point to investigate the different ones and see what limits the district's liability. The attorneys that I've spoken to that specialize in, in the law and its interpretation, the two that I've spoken to feel that the twelve-month look back is the least open to challenge, the most fair, and it accounts for different seasonality that there might be. Obviously, the school district faces a seasonality unlike any other, which is that three-month off summer type of timeframe. In our discussions, we were thinking that if you cherry picked the, the three months of summer when nobody was on staff, that that would open you up to challenge.
But in the twelve-month look back and you have three months off, then does that disqualify? And a substitute is not a continuing contract and their, or, or annual contract, their contract ends in June and doesn't start on the beginning until September?
The law states that you take the, you consider the amount of time that they work and there's an average for each one of those months, and then you have to apply that amount to the months that they don't work. This is what they came out of January through educational provisions.
So if they, I mean, they didn't work because the, because the business was closed, or they didn't work because they didn't work, we, is it dollar?
It, well, for educational employers, they said if you have to average the hours, so say they work thirty hours per week for all of those months that we look at, we have to apply that same amount to June, July, August, and give them credit for thirty hours for being those months as well.
So you're annualizing, not like?
Annualizing your average.
It, do we have the ability to limit subs to? That's why I was wondering if the AESOP allowed for us to then cap them.
And Skyward is also coming out with another release to address some of the ACA.
So potentially, that could address some of that.
And the other thing, Mr. Kennedy, that we do is we have, we've put in place an HR where substitutes now sign that they have no guarantee of hours, and we will also send that out in our substitute information this summer. And actually, in May, we'll send that out and they will sign that as well. So they are signing that there's no guarantee of hours. So that will, that will help us.
No, but my concern is, is if we were trying to not create thirty-five of those employees, that we, the issue then becomes the maximum.
Right, and we have looked at that. Yes, we have, we have spoken with AESOP, we have talked with AESOP several times, and in program that we looked at as well.
And then the other question is, I think, what Ms. Bryant brought up, and that is, do we look at having, instead of, you know, to go in the opposite way, do we have permanent subs? And like, for example, one at every school? I mean, if you take thirty-five, you could almost have one, one and a half at every school that is a permanent sub that you then?
You've got to analyze the cost of insurance and the subs, to get a grade compared to
So you may really be better off then to just limit the number, the subs' hours and deal with it that way and not have that added cost.
So once again, the health track is just, give an opportunity for analysis.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Blocker. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, now we get to Whitley Kuchu Technical Institute, daycare before and after school. I don't think so.
Can I close this?
It's all.
No, it's never all about you.
You may close it, Ms. Johnson. Yes, you may. You may close it, Ms. Johnson. Yes, you may.
Well, first of all, I'm not sure if it's morning or afternoon, but good day. We'll leave it at that. And Ms. Willis did want me to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you about this. She's not able to be with us today, but did want me to express her gratitude for the support she received from you folks in making that difficult decision to close our early childhood ed program. With that, I'll go to the main reason we're here today, and that's to share some information about our before and after-school extended daycare program. We have ten sites. We currently serve ten of the element, eleven elementary schools, and have served over six hundred children in our program as of this point in the school year.
Which one don't you serve?
We do not serve Homosassa Elementary. Enrollment drop below a level where we could support the two staff members required to manage that site. We currently employ twenty-five onsite helpers. Their hours range from twenty-five to twenty-seven point five. That's relevant to the discussion we just had heard. And one full-time program coordinator. I am the administrator responsible for hiring, evaluating, training, managing all of those employees, along with managing enrollment, collection of tuition, program materials, payroll, supplies, and a budget of just over five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Two years ago, as we were going through the process to renew our COE accreditation, and then again last year during our DOE audit, Adult Education Monitoring Visit, we were asked why the district extended daycare program was administered under the WTI umbrella, as it does not fit in with the mission and purpose of an current technical adult education center. Those inquiries led to some preliminary conversation amongst our leadership team. We did some evaluation of salaries, services, the kinds of responsibilities that we had that were relevant to our mission. And one of the things that we lifted out, that Ms. Willis lifted out, is that only ten percent of my salaries, the administrator, is funded out of the extended daycare project. But realistically, I spend closer to forty to fifty percent of my time in managing this before and after-school extended daycare program. As the administrator, I don't know the children we serve. I'm not on those sites. I make it out to those sites typically once each quarter to do site visits, do the evaluations of those employees, troubleshoot. Sometimes I'm called out to a specific site more often, and that's typically to deal with an issue that's arisen, possibly a personnel concern. But on an ongoing daily basis, I have to make decisions that affect the wellbeing of those kids and those sites. When a parent is not at a bus stop for a primary-aged child, and they're brought back to our school, even, elementary school, even if they're not registered in our program. When a parent doesn't come to pick up their child on time, we get a call, I'm in Orlando, I can't get there. They arrive intoxicated to pick up their child. They send someone who's not on their emergency list or without photo ID. Those things typically happen six, six-thirty, seven o'clock at night. And I'm the one who's called to deal with those situations, again, not having a relationship with those parents or knowing the children at that site. So that sometimes is a hindrance in facilitating solutions. Administering that program, Ms. Willis asked me to share, is in addition to the other ninety percent of my funded responsibilities, which are to administer all adult education programs in Citrus County, administer adult career pathways, and support current technical education programs at WTI, as well as write, implement, and manage over three hundred thousand dollars each year in federal grant funds. WTI served almost seven hundred students in adult ed alone last year, in addition to the hundred and seven co-enrolled high school CTE students and over six hundred post-secondary students at our school. The programs I have primary responsibility for run all year, including the summer, and I currently work on an eleven-month contract. As you are aware, the Florida Legislature has focused a great deal of attention on adult ed, career and technical ed, and career pathways for the upcoming school year. WTI is recognized as a leader in the state in the area of adult ed and career pathways, as well as CTE. Ms. Willis strongly believes that one hundred percent of our time, attention, and resources should be spent on developing and enhancing those programs, which are a state priority and are vital to the economic development of our community. WTI has to work to satisfy all the requirements for career and technical ed and adult ed from the DOE, the Council on Occupational Education, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, as well as the Citrus County School Board. And administering the after-school program detracts from the mission and the purpose of our school. Last year, WTI was approached by a private company, the company was ASP After School Programs, regarding the possibility of taking over our extended daycare program. They came to us unsolicited to share information about the program, what they could offer children and parents, as well as elementary school principals in terms of academic tutoring and support. So that kind of opened up that dialogue again and got us thinking some more about possibilities for looking at a different way of delivering before and after-school extended daycare services to kids in Citrus County. Then in August of this year, we were approached by the Y, YMCA, regarding the same issue, again, unsolicited. They came to us, asked about the interest, asked for information about our program. And then the following January, this past January, by the Boys and Girls Club. So we met with those teams at their request. We shared some information about our program. We shared demographics, information about staff, payroll, budget, the logistics of the program. And that led to some additional conversation regarding gaps in what we can offer in our current program and what those organizations could offer, again, to parents, kids, and to elementary school principals. Basically, we provide a babysitting service. We have homework support. We take the kids outside. We give them supervised play. We do arts and crafts. But we don't have the resources or the trained staff to provide fine arts, physical ed enrichment. We don't have resources to offer the nutritional support that some of them can offer as they tap into other grant and funding sources. So again, more conversation. Some of them are able to offer nutritional snacks from within and without size of the school system, as well as access to resources in the community that we don't have access to. So we invited those who had reached out to us to submit a written proposal for review. We developed a rubric, and I have a copy of that to share with each of you. And we used that rubric to evaluate each of those written proposals. At that point, they were each given an opportunity to come in and give a formal presentation. We further evaluated their program, their proposal, based on that proposal and the presentation. Pat Rendio, Denise Willis, and I actually met with each one of them. They had a twenty-minute presentation. We had follow-up question and answer, and then we did a rubric scoring. And that brings us to today. I will give you copies of those documents so you can review them.
And I apologize, you may have said it and I missed it.
I was trying to hurry so you could go to lunch.
What's that?
I was trying to hurry so you could go to lunch.
How was it determined who or what opportunity was given for these groups?
Those were groups that came to us.
How was the community made aware? If I was, if I was somebody that wanted to start a group to do, provide this, or I had a business that wanted to do that, how would I have been able to be part of that process?
It wasn't offered publicly. It was based on organizations that took the initiative to come to us. So it really, there was no public offering.
So, but then it was an inside. It was just purely then a selected group because if there was somebody in Ocala that operated one and they wanted to participate in that, they would not have had an opportunity. Because they wouldn't have known about it.
They wouldn't have known about it, except that I will say ASP, their office, their local regional office is in Ocala.
What does ASP stand for?
ASP stands for After School Programs. They're a private company, as opposed to the Y and the Boys and Girls Club, which are by the league. They're both 501Cs. And we do have two ladies here from the Y with us today. And the first paper that I handed you was the summary rubric score that is the compilation of both the written proposal evaluations as well as the presentations. And as you can see, the Y was clearly the group that came out on top in terms of the rubric, the score, the presentation.
Like ASP has fifty-seven out of sixty-six, and the Y has fifty-one out of sixty-six.
If you go on to page two, flip it over, there's a section two and then a final analysis. We also looked at a summary of services. And some of the main considerations were when they continue to offer services at all of the elementary schools. Would they be willing to absorb current staff? That was key for us because some of those folks have invested a large number of years, and they really love their kids. The other part of that was we wanted, if indeed we proceed with this, we want a very smooth transition at each of the schools. The students and the parents know those folks. In fact, when times come, that, you know, situations arise where I need to move folks, there's always fallout from that. They appreciate having that continuity and care. And the Y has expressed.
What's section two? Section two doesn't.
All right, there's a rubric score.
No, no.
The section two.
Oh, what is it?
Section two is, we looked at facility use. One of the things that we follow is the school board policy for outside agencies to pay a facility use fee. And we looked at what would be our scale or a range of what each of these different organizations could provide to support Citrus County schools and pay for a facility use. Currently, I don't pay a facility use fee. I'm inside the school system.
But what we're saying then is because a not-for-profit is going to pay a different fee, and that's, I'm trying to figure out, why did WTI and the Y get a thirty-four and ASP got a twenty?
Well, currently, we don't, we don't have to pay a facility use fee. WC, I'm sorry, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, and ASP would all be agencies coming from the outside. And so we looked at, and we were asked to look at, you know, would they be willing.
It says the YMCA, it looks like, is the thirty, is the same as the WTI.
So if you subtract the thirty-four for WTI, then that brings our score down to forty-three, plus thirty-four. And we're only, I'm sorry, without the thirty-four, we're only at forty-three.
Yeah, I'm, it's, you've got, on section two.
Section two relates to a facility use fee. Currently, we operate in these public schools, in the elementary schools, in the cafeterias.
YMCA is, also has a thirty-four, the same as WTI?
The YMCA has expressed the willingness to provide a ten thousand dollar fee for each elementary school utilized for the program.
What do you mean by, that's what I said.
They'll pay.
They're going to pay ten thousand dollars.
They'll pay a facility use fee to Citrus County School Board for the use of each of those facilities. So if it's ten schools, times ten thousand, it would be a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. And WTI, though.
We don't pay one. So to provide equity in scoring, we just, we negated that. However, that brings us in at the lowest end as far as.
Boys and Girls Club then in that case was not willing to pay anything.
At this point in time now.
So they put a zero, and ASP was saying they were willing to pay between six and eight thousand dollars.
Right, which would be about ten percent of the revenue. They wanted it to be a revenue-based fee, which makes sense to us. And looking at the revenue we earned last year, they said it would be between, be between six and eight thousand dollars.
So with the exception of that, that was the only difference in the scoring, though, that increased.
Yes, so if you go back to the first side, the front page, and you look at the services that are offered, again, WTI, we were very fair with our, and very honest with our own evaluation. We scored a forty-three. YMCA a fifty-one, Boys and Girls Club a thirty-nine, and ASP, the company, private company from Ocala, a fifty-seven.
But there was some things on there that we don't do anyway. One of them is middle school. So they got a higher score for middle school. Ours was zero, so.
We've been asked, we get asked every year to expand into the middle school, and we just don't have the resources to do that.
But if you're comparing it to what we're already doing, it probably wasn't a valid question.
We felt it was relevant in looking at a company that may be willing to come in and do something that we've not been able to do. That it would be another advantage for our district and for our kids, especially sixth-grade parents are continually asking for that service.
So the ten thousand dollars, is that the fee that the YMCA came up with? Or is that if you add it all, the number of hours and the fee that we charge outside organizations to use our facilities, that would be the ten thousand dollars?
It was a number that I was given and asked to work with.
So you gave them thirty-four points, assuming that that was the same as zero to us. Well, how did you evaluate the ten thousand dollars? Just more than the other people?
If they said ten thousand, ten thousand per site, we have ten sites, then they were given a thirty-four. If they said ten percent, and it was between six and eight thousand, we basically, in coming up and designing a rubric, we had to come up with a range, and a range of scores that were relevant to that ten thousand dollar figure that would be equitable.
Who set the ten thousand dollar figure?
When Ms. Block and I looked at this program, and they said that these groups were wanting to come, and it gives a proposal on that. When we looked at the revenue that WTI generates, after we back out on expenses and everything, the net revenue puts us well over eighty thousand dollars, and that puts our own staff in there. So when we talked about what it would cost for any outside agency to do that, I ran a facility to pay for utilities and do those types of things. That's where that number came from.
So that was a real figure based on cost, not based on how much profit we were making under the present system?
I'm not sure how to answer that question.
Well, it was based on eighty thousand.
Yeah, but eighty thousand is how much money we generated as profit. That doesn't relate to how much it actually cost us to keep those facilities up? You know, ten thousand dollars has no relevancy to the cost of the operation of the building if you're saying it's just based on how much profit we made. Right?
True.
So, but. So how do we know a ten thousand figure is good or bad? Too much or too little?
Well, right now, right now with our facility usage out there, they don't pay anything. Now, I do think they give an allotment to.
We provide, we provide all of our paper products, soap products, cleaning products. There's no impact to the elementary schools for those things. Even at our summer camp, we provide our own custodian, and we order in bulk all the cleaning and day-to-day maintenance supplies for restrooms and cleaning for those sites.
And we, ten thousand dollars fee of figures that would be comparable to all the school supplies?
I'd have to go back over my budget, and it's, I mean, I've got pages of budget from last, just from last year. So I'd have to, I mean, I could break that down with no problem, but I would need some time to do that. We collect tuition. We're completely tuition-based, fee-based. And because of the way our program is set up, we don't have any subsidized scale for parents, sliding scale. That was one advantage that each of these agencies brought in, is that they were able to subsidize and scholarship students whose parents were working but earning a very low income. So they were able to provide some support for reducing fees for parents.
Our schools are already open during our operation, so it's not adding any cost to us, whether it's WTI or some of the other groups. The other thing is, and we're trying to make sure we keep it affordable for our parents, comparable to the cost that WTI is going to be doing, that they wouldn't need for those fees. The other thing we had to look at, or WTI looked at when they compared it around other districts around the state, the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club were one of few districts that even the school district provides that service. In fact, I think we're just one of, just a handful.
YMCA does the after-school program in Hernando County, right? Is that correct? Do they also pay the school's ten thousand dollar piece to provide the program there?
Not at this time. I'm Melissa Dubuque. I'm the chief operating officer for the YMCA of the Suncoast. We provide, our service area is most of Pinellas County, most of Pasco, all of Hernando, and Citrus County. And so I can speak to those counties and what we do. And it's a different arrangement in each, based on how that, the program has evolved in those counties. So in Hernando, they do not charge us at this time. And we do pay some plant operator fees. We pay some additional fees that they charge us based on some additional expenses. But they also have the opportunity in Hernando to use our swimming pool for all of their high school swim practices and meets. So there's a bit of a trade, I guess you would say, in services. Pinellas County chooses to ask for a per-day fee. And so there is another Y that provides in southern Pinellas and St. Petersburg. And there is another nonprofit that provides in Pinellas. The Pinellas school system chooses to have a per-day fee, and that's just their structure. So again, it's, and there are YMCA's around the country who are providing care. And in every school system, it's a bit different based on the needs and desires of that school system and how they choose to operate.
Okay, I'm just worried if every school has a ten thousand dollar fee, if that's not going to eventually drive up the cost of the daycare to the parents, yeah.
It's a factor.
And that was why, because it looked like the way ASP was structuring it or reviewing it, it looked like they were trying to factor that as a cost of what their revenue was.
I think all of them, I think all of them attempted to do that.
It was the only one that had a note on it.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't discount YMCA because they want to pay us too much. I just would say, maybe we don't want to charge them too much. You know, I think we need to charge them what the costs are without having a profit in there because we're providing the services to our own students. And it's essential if one after-school care, so.
Just trying to offset the cost.
Yeah, I mean, we would want to have the highest quality daycare at the lowest cost for as many students that need it in every school that is, has that need, without it being prohibitively expensive to deliver that, without it then impacting the families and limiting their use of the services, I guess is what I'm saying. So. So we already have built into our policy a use fee. I don't know how that equates to the $10,000, if it's more or less.
I'm not sure how it would equate if you took it out on a, like, a per-day basis, which is what Ms. Dubuque was referring to. And it may end up being more, it might be less. But again, it's something we can look at.
What's our, Mr. Block, what's our use fee, our daily use fee, or hourly?
Looking at that right now, it varies based on what they're using, how many hours they'll be there, and also custodial supplies. So there's some various others that are looking at that.
And we do pay different fees in Pinellas, based on whether it's an all-day over spring break or holiday versus the regular school day. This year, they adjusted, and they had an early out day on Wednesday, and so the fees were a little bit more based on the number of hours that we were building.
Okay, so you're saying that YMCA could provide all-day daycare on days where we had day off, teacher work day or whatever?
Absolutely.
And during, what about during Christmas vacation and that sort of thing? And we're not currently doing that right now?
Yes.
We do offer spring break and summer, but we do not offer it during Christmas.
Okay. And then would we then have to leave, have somebody on staff to open the school? If it was like the week of Thanksgiving or the Christmas break, we would have to have somebody on staff as a school, right?
Well, currently, we have custodial staff, 12-month staff.
They're not there like during Christmas, are they?
No, and we don't operate during Christmas, so you're correct.
Well, it would be nice if we had some additional, I mean, if they had the ability to provide the services.
Some of our principals do work during that time.
Well, we have paid this, I said, plant operator fees. If it, if need be, and you want the program to be available for the parents, and we think it's a great advantage, then, you know, there's a plant operator fee that you could charge us for those particular days. Because if they have to be there to open the building and then to close it, that's perfectly legitimate. We've experienced that before.
And I believe that was built into that, that concept of the facility use fee.
All right. So are you recommending the YMCA today, or are we just reviewing this information?
Well, Mrs. Willis asked me to forward that our recommendation was for the YMCA, but that we're looking for direction from the board as to where you would like us to go with this.
Well, this is something YMCA has been actually actively trying to get before and after-school programs in elementary schools for many years. And we have a great relationship with YMCA. So I'm really pleased that they actually came out on top. But I just want to make sure that the cost to them is also fair.
Exactly.
One of the questions I have is, the WTI, the staff, what type of credentials or requirements or background checks do we do for WTI and those staff? And how does that compare? Because my experience has been is that when I've been into the schools, you have a little more mature staff than, I think sometimes, my experience with YMCA is we have more teens that are doing that after-care. And there's a positive and negative to that, too. Teens can sometimes relate with kids better. But that was something I wasn't sure of how that compared.
We ask those questions as well. Currently, our program requires that they have a minimum of the DCF certification for school-aged children. That's 40 modules that are taken through DCF. In our conversations with the Y, as well as in our conversation, we're partnering with them this summer. We are both located at Pleasant Grove for the summer program. We're going to be sharing some spaces, and we've coordinated schedules with Ms. Kirby. I think we've had some really good positive communication, and we've learned from each other. But if you look on their proposal, I believe it's on page three at the bottom, they follow the same thing we do in terms of the drug screening. We currently provide the same drug and background screening that we do for any employee for Citrus County schools. They have said that they would follow the same process. They would also, at a minimum, require those 40 hours of state childcare classes within their first year. We require it in the first 90 days. 20 hours of childcare training each consecutive year, we require 10. And we provide eight to 10 ourselves, and then encourage folks to go beyond that. All directors are required to complete and maintain a director credential. We have one person who is our program coordinator that we require to have them. However, we have some of our other folks who also carry that credential. And again, they have committed to us as a school district and as a program that they would absorb as many of our current employees as possible.
And is that currently what YMCA is, are those staff requirements currently what you're operating as in our district?
Correct. Yes, all of our programs are licensed by the DCF, and that's our standard operating. It's often we go above and beyond that.
And I know in our conversation regarding the summer with Ms. Kirby was that we had no employees, even in their program, supervising kids who were under 18 years of age. And that's, our current requirement is 18 years old.
Is that the same for you all?
That's correct. For group leaders, they have to be that age, but for our supervisory site director staff, they have to be 21, they have to have other...
But we have some of our, our high schoolers that are working with, like, for example, Home SASSA.
Those are enrichment programs, we call them. That's kind of, it's not the same as licensed before and after-care. Enrichment programs, it could be for a six-week period, it's a sports program perhaps, it might be, no, cheerleading program, it might be an art program, but it's not a licensed before and after-care. Those programs would be add-ons to before and after-care. So if a child is actually in care, then wanted to participate in sports, that could be possible. And those might be some younger teenagers who excel in those. But as far as leadership, even in those programs, we have supervisors.
So at Home SASSA right now, I know we don't have WTI, are we only having an enrichment program of YMCA there? So that's why that's structured and, see how good it is, ask questions? I learn so much.
There's always, we usually run at least two to maybe three different enrichment programs at the schools, and there's always one person on-site that's 18, if there's, you know, somebody that's a little younger than that there doing it.
Thank you. Wanting to mention that? Mr. Mullin asked me about Home SASSA. We have had that conversation with the Y, and it is with all of them, anyone who developed a proposal. Because there has been a renewed urge to have that, our program, put back in at Home SASSA. We had asked Mr. Bossy at the beginning of the year, along with a couple of parents who were active in his advisory council, to go ahead and solicit names of families and ages of children who were interested. So we would know if we had the resources to put two positions back out at that school. And the Y has indicated that, and they already have a relationship there, that they would also pursue that. So it could be 11.
Next question, the first was asked for. Does it serve as such as an assistant principal?
I knocked it off, that's why I go here. I have to be on-site because I remember all during a teaching experience that you'd have to have someone, an administrator or someone appointed by administrator, on-site if an activity was taking place in the school system. Are you saying that that's not the case?
Well, currently, when our program's not run until 6 o'clock, and sometimes beyond that, if parents are late picking up children, I am on-call all of that time.
But no one is on-site?
The site leader and the site helper, or if it's a larger site, the site leader and two site helpers, along with custodial staff, they have emergency radios, and they all have my personal cellphone.
So at each of these places, you wouldn't have to have an assistant principal there all during the summer vacation or Christmas vacation or whatever?
That would be a district, obviously, district leadership.
That's not the non-problem?
Currently, that's not what we have, no.
Okay.
The policy states, the principal doesn't need, how it's always been interpreted based on your bed, sometimes it doesn't need a custodian.
Is that right?
On a Sunday, with churches, the principal's not going to be there.
But someone does have to be there, someone designated.
Currently, the way the policy's written...
You know, one thing, and I echo what Ms. Deutschman mentioned, and that is the question of the facility fee and how that can be balanced to not be a deterrent or to not be an obstacle. The problem, of course, is, is if that now adjusts it to the fact that, in this case, another competitor, scoring becomes now in line, my question, I guess I would say, is there's nothing here that also really references a local presence versus an out-of-town presence in the rubric? And that would be something that, you know, the Y has been embedded into Citrus County and has continued to do that.
And is expanding.
And expanding. So I think that while, just because I do think that we need to evaluate what that usage fee is, at the same time, I want to make sure that we don't hurt ourselves to then say, for example, that, because I think that when I look at the other rubrics, ASP does certainly provide a very close to some of those other features and...
They have an outstanding program. And one of the advantages of that particular group is that they were also able to offer hot meals for dinner before our children went home, served at 5 o'clock every day. That was huge for some of our kids. But again, we looked at that local presence and then all the other factors that you see in the rubric.
Right. What is charged, say, in another county, maybe Hernando County, or something, what is charged per student?
Charge per student?
What is the cost?
Well, the fee, we're going to charge, sorry, one of us should pop up here. Our fee is going to be 45 here in Citrus. That's what we put in the proposal. And it's slightly more than that in Hernando County. Again, we were very sensitive to the cost currently and wanting to maintain that cost structure for an easy transition for parents.
So 42?
45 per week, including the meals and all of that?
Including snacks, correct, not meal. I wanted to address the fee just for a second. I mean, obviously, when we built a perform a budget for this, for the facility use fee, it seemed in line for us with what we pay in relationship in Pinellas, even though they're on a per-day basis. Of course, what we would suggest, should we be offered the opportunity to do this, is that we evaluate that on an annual basis because we're trying to compare what you have been running to what we will be running. And if we're in all 11 schools, if enrollment should go up because we do provide scholarship assistance and help, and we'll be coordinating with the Early Learning Coalition to provide assistance as well, you know, we'll have a better idea of a real budget as we have a year of experience behind us. So I think evaluating that fee over time would be appropriate, but we feel like going in, we're comfortable with that fee and think that it's a fair fee to us.
What is the AH stand here? I didn't read this.
It's for grade school students.
Kindergarten to fifth grade.
Yep.
As a kindergarten's an out-of-town kindergarten through?
That's right.
Okay.
And then the summertime, we run rising K to, I'm sorry, kindergarten to rising sixth graders. That way, fifth graders who are leaving the elementary school that have been with our program will still have services in the summer as they transition to the middle school in the sixth grade year.
Okay, and would YMCA follow?
That was our conversation.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, thank you so very much. We appreciate all your input, all your hard work, and for taking care of our children at 7 o'clock at night. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we do need some direction on that. What do you think?
I love the YMCA.
Prepare an agreement and just, you know...
Prepare an agreement. I like that.
Does Ms. Powers say?
Oh, okay. All right.
Run for basketball?
No. That's not something I would do. Do we want to adjourn for lunch? All right. We're going to adjourn our meeting, and we'll come back at 1:30. Having completed three of nine, only three of nine.